Thank you all for coming. I was a little out of the place to do the elections. We moved in here, so I appreciate that. If you all can join me in the Father's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Thank you. Then we'll go to citizens communication. Amanda?
We have two. Mike Gonzalez, 1632 Sam Houston Drive, City Hall operations, and wants to be called. So I'm gonna go ahead and call him right now.
I'm here.
Oh, you're here.
Hi.
Oh, okay.
Hi, good afternoon.
And one thing is, we are gonna move to three minutes for citizens communication. So from two minutes, we're gonna move to three minutes. We have three minutes.
That's awesome. That's fantastic. Now I have 60 seconds to think of what else I want to say. First of all, thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak. And it sure looks good to have you up here, Mayor. Congratulations again. I would like to take this time to talk about efficiency. Efficiency in city government. Having to do business with the city of Harlingen is a little rough right now, and hopefully with all this energy, it can carry on to be able to improve all the departments, in particular, the building department. Right now, I've had a couple of experiences in trying to get a permit accomplished for an apartment complex. And, you know, efficiency is important if we're gonna attract outside businesses to be able to provide housing for the citizens of Harlingen. I'm not sure if any of you all have ever had the opportunity to dial the 216-5000, which is the City Hall primary phone number. By the time you get through with entire menu, which is 240 seconds, you kind of forget about why you called, right? And you never get anybody live. And, you know, that's possibly something... It sounds so small and minor, but truly, it's truly important, right? If somebody has not ever done business with the city of Harlingen and they're calling that, 240 seconds is an eternity from the time the call starts to the time it gets all the way through. I know the city employees are great. I know they're trying. But maybe a little bit of efficiency is something that all of us can try to help out. We do have a great city, a lot of potential for growth, and analyzing each city department to see how it can improve itself so, you know, we can attract what is important to the city: housing, revenue, and income. So I just encourage you all to please take that to heart. And by all means, call that number when you have 240 seconds. And hear it out, and find out why it's so difficult to get through to somebody at City Hall. But on a positive note, I'm excited for everything that Harlingen's gonna accomplish. Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
We have Mr. Desi Martinez regarding streets.
Hi. And I'm very happy to see this new leadership and look forward to it. I agree with the gentleman. I used to be a builder in this area. But it's regarding the item number seven, S.I.P., the Street Improvements Program.
Mr. Martinez, I'm sorry. Can you just...
Address. 1806 Haverford Boulevard. Used to live in 1229 South E., the other half of my life here. Anyway, regarding S.I.P., the list that this engineer is presenting, I haven't seen it. I don't think any of us have seen it that he's presenting for you all to approve. But my cousin, Jamie Muñiz, that lives on Taff Street, and of course, our dear Mayor that used to be a principal out there at Coakley and those schools, cluster of schools out there. Taff Street is a collector's street that needs improvement, and it should be done in the summer when kids are out of school because it collects children, parents, and workers, et cetera, all the way from the east side, Treasure Hills, down to the east side of school. I don't know, this young engineer just came on board, realizes the traffic count in that area, but it's fantastic. And the street is in real need. A street repairs and has been. It becaned, excellent. It's improved. All the collector's streets there are. Yes. But Taff hasn't. So please amend it to be done, if possible, this summer. School's out. And I appreciate your time on that.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
We have no more citizens communication.
Okay, then we'll go straight into the proclamations. We have two today. The first one is Elder Abuse Awareness Month. We have Abigail Rivera, Monica Figueroa, Frank Gonzalez, Joe Cruz, and Marina Quesada.
Thank you so much. So this proclamation is for Elder Abuse Awareness Month, whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions. And as we age, we build momentum by accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared to enrich our community. And whereas abuse of older adults and people with disabilities in a community concern affecting thousands of people across Texas, and abuse affected more than 118,208 older adults and people with disabilities in Texas in 2021. And whereas abuse neglect... I'm sorry. Abuse against elder adults and people with disabilities is grossly underreported because of social stigma, embarrassment, and fear. And adult abuse affects men and women of all income and ability levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds in all communities. And whereas elder abuse is everyone's business, it's important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elder abuse. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, Texas, in recognition thereof, do hereby proclaim the month of June 22, 2022, to be Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Harlingen, Texas, and urge all residents to work together to reduce abuse and neglect of older adults and people with disabilities.
And I have another special proclamation, and it's for Mr. Mayor, Sam Lozano. Will you approach? You're amazing. This is a true pleasure for me to do. Let me just grab you over here so that way... There we go. Okay.
This is my wife.
Hi there. Oh, hi, Katie. Memories in the making. Okay. So this proclamation is for you, Mayor. It says, "Whereas Samuel 'Sam' Lozano served three terms as mayor from 1970 to 1972, and 1983 to 1987 as city commissioner for seven terms from 1962 to 1970, and 1977 to 1983." Wow. And "whereas he served during World War II, then attended college on the G.I. Bill to become a lifelong educator. And whereas Mr. Lozano became the first Hispanic mayor of Harlingen in 1970." His foremost accomplishments include the development of Victor Park and garnering pensions for public safety officials. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, and on behalf of the Harlingen city commissioners, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to extend this recognition to Mr. Sam Lozano for his past accomplishments as former mayor and city commissioner for a total of 20 years in public service, and hereby proclaim June 1, 2022, as Sam Lozano's Day. And urge all citizens to extend to Mr. Lozano our sincere appreciation for his past dedicated services and continued support to the city of Harlingen, a citizen who has earned the respect of the community, family, and friends. In witness thereof, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, Texas, have here unto set hand and cause the seal of the Harlingen, Texas, to be affixed on this first day of June 2022." I figured I'd read it all because it's such a privilege and an honor for me to provide the keys... This is the first time I do this, so it's exciting for me. The keys to the city, and I couldn't think of a better person to give it to but the first Hispanic mayor of the city of Harlingen. The first person to create history right here. So the city of Harlingen in 1970 was a totally different Harlingen. And so the fact that Mr. Lozano was able to be mayor at that time was truly a historic moment. So I hope everybody remembers where they were today when Mr. Lozano got the keys to the city of Harlingen because he is well-deserving.
Thank you very much. Nice meeting you, and we wanted to meet you. It's been a privilege really to have served when it was difficult here in this community to be in government. But thank God that through efforts and hard work, we were able to penetrate the wall that seemed to separate the Mexicano. And it wasn't easy, but thank God we accomplished it. And so now we're one city that is doing everything possible from all angles and all languages and differences of opinion to be here next to a woman mayor. We've come a long way. I wouldn't have expected to say anything, but I wanted to meet... I've met her before I even got this close to her. But congratulations for being mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
From mayor to mayor, we have a great city. We have great people in this city. And I'm sure that we're in good hands. And it's with humble heart I give... I sit in this little Harlingen. The opportunity really to serve. And I never thought someone from the worst side would ever be a mayor of Harlingen. But not only I'm a mayor, but now a woman mayor. So we've come a hell of a long way.
Si se puede.
And thank... I see a few people here, but I am sitting alone. I could just... So again, thank you for being here. And thanks to the commission, you know.
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody wants a picture with you because you're a celebrity.
Three, two, one. Right, one, two, three. Perfect.
One more, guys, one more. One, two.
Item number two on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have the regular meetings of February 2, 2022. Are there any changes to the minutes? No? Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, we have the consent agenda. Items 3A through 3G. You have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution to appoint Norma Sepulveda mayor as the primary member and Gabriel Gonzalez, city manager, as the alternative member to the RGV MPO policy board. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, Chris Basel was a former mayor that was appointed to the RGV MPO. We're now need to appoint our new mayor, Norma Sepulveda, as the primary member, and myself as the alternate. So I recommend approval of the item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, before we get to item number five, I would like to point out that we've had a charter amendment. And in that charter amendment, the voters of the city of Harlingen voted to reduce the number of airport board members from nine to seven. So the commission may want to take up the makeup of that board through by considering item number 12 before item number five.
Mayor, we just had the city election.
So we're gonna go ahead and move item to item number 12 first, and that is board appointments. Do we have any board appointments?
I'd like to appoint Mike Garza to the Harlingen Water Works.
I have none, Mayor.
And I have one. Kirk? Schubert? Is that right? Kirk Schubert to the Animal Advisory Board. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Orive?
No, ma'am. Oh, yes. Like, I'd like to go on the fact that we just had the charter amendment. I'd like to retain seven of those slots, right? So what I'd like to recommend is the airport boards, seat one and two. They presently being held by Colonel Dowling and Mr. Resendez, Tito. Seat three, Ricky Lial. Seat four, Vicky Moore. Seat five, Judy Yezel. Seat six, Nick Consiglio. And seat seven, Ronaldo Rubiano. I'd like to make that motion.
You have a second?
Second. I'm confused. Are we on back to five or are we still on 12?
We're on 12.
We're on 12.
But based on Commissioner Orive is saying, based on the recent election and the change in the composition of the airport board, he's moving to retain seven because that's what the voters elected to do.
But I don't see anything on 12 for the airport.
It says airport right there.
Where's it?
Item.
Ah, bingo. The short word.
Very good.
Got it. Good job.
First one there.
Under eight.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're gonna go back to item number five. Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the Harlingen City Code, Chapter 8, Aviation Article 2, Section 8.86, to replace it with a new section 8.86, created, composition appointment, removal, terms, and vacancies, and ethics. Counsel?
Yes. An ordinance amending Harlingen City Code, Chapter 8, Aviation Article 2, Section 8.86, and to replace it with a new section 8.86.
Is there any discussion? Do you have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number six. Consideration and possible action to repeal ordinance 06-05, Chapter 38, Section 38.103, establishing new tipping fees for non-residents and commercial establishments, and Section 38.105 to limit the exemptions allowed.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, commissioners. The current tipping fees have not changed since 2006, and we believe that a consequence of that has been that we started receiving a lot of non-residential and commercial establishments coming to our transfer station facility. And so there is a misconception out there that we have an active landfill, and in fact, we have a closed landfill with a transfer station, which means that we transport everything to a contract landfill we currently have with Brownsville. And from time to time, we've had to actually close our transfer station because of the amount that we started receiving being that we are the lowest price. So we did some research, and we found out that the prices range anywhere from $36 to $85. And we are proposing to increase that, our fees, our tipping fees, to the rate of $93.50 per 2,000 pounds or per ton. Anything less than 2,000, anything over than 2,000 would be at a prorated rate of $93.50 to go above that, just to be prorated within our system. We are looking to do this sometime in August 1st to allow time for people to get adjusted. We're gonna put out some advertisements, put it on social media, get with our regular people that come in. In addition to that, we have been contacted by TCEQ, and they recommend that we do a $10 fee for any commercial that is running our streets without a covered top that has any type of debris or construction material. They need to be covered so that they're not... You know, they don't have papers and stuff flying around throughout the city. So that would be a standard fee for any load that is identified that does not have a cover. And for the Section 38.105 exemptions, we wanna not allow double-axle trailers to come in, and no trailer longer than eight feet.
And how are you suggesting to communicate that to the clientele that you're receiving?
Right, so again, we want to give like a grace period all the way to August. We're not gonna... If this passes tonight, it's not gonna affect until August 1st.
Yeah, but do you plan on giving like a flyer every time they come in, something with a receipt?
Yes. Flyers, we're gonna have posted. We're gonna post it on social media. We're gonna post it on our website. And we're gonna mail out to current residents that we already have them, I mean, current construction establishments that we already have them.
And this is not gonna affect our residential...
No, those will remain the same. This is only for non-residential and commercial establishments.
We go on that $10 fee that we'd be charging for not coverage. Does that go to the TCEQ or do we have a...
That is... That stays with us. But it's a TCEQ recommendation.
Did... I just have a question on the double axle. Because you know, you see me there all the time.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of other roofing companies, local roofing companies, have that double axle. So are we not gonna be able to...
That is what we're...
Okay, so if... So that's gonna impact a lot of the local businesses here. So what that means is that we're gonna have to go out to other facilities?
Right.
Or is there... Can we change that to where we can still be included if we're in the city or if we're residents? Or can we exclude that section? And is... Who's recommending that?
So we looked at several scenarios. We don't have a mechanism in place to track whether they're inside the city. Like, we discuss if a commercial establishment has a building permit, per se, and so that they're working within the city of Harlingen, doing business in the city. Unfortunately, right now, we don't have... The software that we use for our scale is proprietary, so it's not linked to our outside building permits. It's not connected to any of those. We are looking to upgrade that system. That system has also not been upgraded. But we don't have a mechanism in place right now to be able to track it. The consensus was to just not allow it at this time because of the fact that we've had to close.
Okay, but again, that punishes the local businesses here. And that's... I personally, because I own a roofing company, that's gonna impact my business and a lot of other businesses. So can we...
Couldn't... Let me ask some... Couldn't use the building permit or the construction permit that they're using for that project? Couldn't they bring that with them to prove that it's from within the city?
So that's what we discussed. But unfortunately, we have no way to verify that it's there or not. We would have to stop and call the building permits and see if it's active. Because right now, we don't have the system.
But hold on. But that could be... Just a suggestion. That could be included in the permitting process itself when they go pull the permit, that the building department would notify the landfill at the same time, right? That, hey, this project's going on, and they're authorized to dump between... Because you give an estimate...
But do they get the seal?
I mean, it's just a... It's a suggestion, right? To not... I understand his point. But what I think they're trying to do is... Because we're so low, we don't want to encourage people from outside the valley to come in and dump, and then we gotta go pay it back to ship it somewhere else.
No, I agree.
So I get that, but...
But we don't have... Roofing companies don't require permits. We don't have a building permit. So let me just ask this.
You want to... Can we require a permit for the roofers?
No.
I'm asking you, man.
Let me ask this. Can we go ahead...
You don't want to be nothing.
Can we go ahead and approve this and then make an amendment on the second reading and discuss this later?
I suggest, I suggest we prove it as is, and then maybe you can meet with the staff and see if you can come up with an alternative.
Yeah, we can make an amendment on the second reading.
So it's going to affect the local businesses, small businesses here in Harlingen, correct?
If they, if they have trailers that are larger than eight feet or double axle, the local small businesses that have a regular trailer or use their long bed pickup trucks and stuff, no, it won't affect them.
But local contractors, so where would, so Harlingen contractors that are local contractors that are used to go into the facility, where would they have to go now?
They can continue to come, they're just going to pay the, well, if they have a double axle, they can go to Brownsville, they can go to La Feria, they can go to Edinburgh, Donna, that's where, that's where we're getting them from right now, that's what we started doing the research.
And what's the, I guess I didn't follow, why are you changing it? What is the purpose?
Because, because we're the lowest in, I guess, in the market right now. We're getting overwhelmed from outside sources. For example, contractors from Brownsville are driving all the way here to dump it so that we can transfer it, put it in a trailer, and take it back to Brownsville.
We have issues with the transfer station because we've had to shut it down on occasion. But we're trying to actually make it so that there is roads, or something else, but to Commissioner Fuente's point, we can actually look at the ordinance to actually accommodate those double-axle trailers by charging an added fee if they still want to dump at our landfill.
Right, that's what I was, I mean, it seems like it would be smarter, not smarter, but maybe a different, an alternative would be to charge a fee instead of saying, no, we're not going to allow it, because it is going to affect, and especially, right, with the price of gas and sending local businesses to Brownsville. If there's no way to avoid that, then I'm sure that they'd like to, I would imagine that they'd prefer to pay a small fee instead.
Yeah, so that was my point of, I think we can pass it as is and let, you know, come back with staff with an alternative or a solution.
Registration for local businesses.
Awesome.
Rodrigo, how much are they charging in La Feria?
Eighty-five dollars. That's the transfer station that sends it to McLaughlin.
So then local businesses could go to La Feria, and it would be cheaper than even coming here?
No, it's more expensive. La Feria is more expensive.
You just said it's eighty-five bucks. We're going to be ninety-three.
Yeah, but right now, we've been more expensive. It's still, it's still, to the mayor's point, now you're asking local businesses to go outside of the city of Harlingen, and it's almost like you're punishing local businesses. And I know it's not that far, but believe me, pulling a trailer with that much tonnage
Oh, it's timing too.
And going a couple of times a week does, does, does make an impact. So again, I would agree with, okay, Mr. Gonzalez and Commissioner Orive, let's just go ahead and pass as is, and on the second reading, we'll come back with an amendment to figure out how we can make some kind of compromise or a fair compromise. So I would like to make a motion approved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Rodrigo.
Item number seven. Consideration and possible action to approve the proposed list of streets within the twenty-two to twenty-two to twenty-three Streets Improvement Program.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Craig Cook, Assistant City Manager. Before I make some remarks, I have a couple of page changes to give you for your books.
Oh, jeez.
It's the first page, that's the last.
Are you sure the last guy used to do that a lot?
Okay, thank you.
So the last guy did that a lot.
Thought you were rushing to, thought you were going to jump.
So the purpose of the page changes is to inform you that we've made a couple of slight additions and deletions to two lists. We are currently finishing the design of the twenty-one, twenty-two list. We hope to put that on the street this month or next, and then we'll start paving in October. And to that list, we are adding an additional six hundred and fifty centerline feet of Clifford Street in the Treasure Hills area. We're doing four thousand, seven hun, four thousand seven hundred and sixty-five feet of that street already. We want to add the last two blocks to connect it to Hane Street. That's about a twelve percent increase of the work on Clifford. So that's the addition for the work that we will be paving next year. And then the list that I am seeking your approval for is the list that we will be designing this year, sorry, this next budget year, and then paving in the following year. And to that list, we are deleting one block of Garfield Avenue there at the cemetery. It's almost an alleyway, and we repaved it a few years ago, so it really doesn't need to be repaved at all. And of course, that will save us some money. And so the purpose of the new map, the last page I gave you, was to delete Garfield from that map.
May I ask how you come up with the criteria of which, how are you prioritizing the projects right now?
These two lists are the, are the last lists of efforts done several years ago, I would say, four or five years ago, at least one city engineer ago. We are trying to get under contract a firm to come in and assess all of our streets, much like Google Earth drives around and takes pictures of buildings. This company takes, takes pictures of roads and assesses them on a scale of one to twenty. And when we get that list, then we will prioritize the really bad ones from the really good ones.
How long does that take?
And create more lists.
What's the timeframe on that? I mean, how, does that, is that like a year process, two-year process?
Well, they're only here a couple, once they get here, they'll only be here a couple of weeks doing that, and then probably a month to simulate the data.
Well, because the question I have is, obviously, some streets are utilized more than others and whatnot, right? But, you know, I'd like to see some kind of calculation where every district is represented equitably, right? Because they're all paying the same tax, the map is now drawn up pretty evenly across where you got, you know, so many people in each district, right? And it's divided property. So what I, what I don't want to see is maybe like District Two or District Three, that they get skipped over on a cycle, right?
Yes.
Because, what is, are we doing, is it up to four million now? Budget?
No, it's about two-ish.
Okay, well, it's grown, right? And even if you put all that into one district, it makes, it's a great impact, but it's a very small impact, right? I mean, it's not, it's never got enough money.
Yeah.
But I think, I think, as long as we're distributing the monies equally every year, that every district at least gets something, right? That their tax dollars are being, it's not like, well, I'm going to, I'm going to take care of you next time. No, every, you know, I think if we keep that up, it's just a more level. And I, and I can see the map, I think everybody's getting the work done, right?
Yeah.
But, but, yeah, that's just my concern. So like, what, I don't know what area, what district is in the pink, right? Obviously, not getting a lot of work done, and this green area, also not, right? It's more concentrated in the center and out here. And that's just my visual.
But again, that's just that year's, this year's, I should say, next year's.
Right.
Next year's work.
Right, right, right. So I just, when are you thinking of bringing that back to the commission as far as getting that study done? Because that would help a lot, right?
Well, as I say, we're trying to get them under contract, and we won't have the results for several months. And, but we don't really need another list until we design the list I hope you're about to approve.
Right, okay. I got your noise.
Great.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Thank you. Great. I drove around my district, because once I saw this on the agenda packet that we received, I drove around the, my district, looking at the specific streets that were for my district that were going to get worked on. And I wanted to, like, earlier today, I was driving down Brenneman Road, and I went down that street from Stewart Place all the way to Dilworth. And that street, in my opinion, is not as bad off as other streets in my district.
I agree.
And I wanted to substitute, because one that I've been getting a lot of calls from is the South Palm Court, from Garrett Road all the way down to, I believe it's Blumeria Lane, I think that's the name, Blumeria Lane. It's on, so South Palm Court from Garrett all the way down to Blumeria Lane. I would like to substitute that one for the Brenneman, the Brenneman Road from Stewart Place to Dilworth.
Would that be the same mileage or?
Honestly, I don't know. That's why I'm suggesting it. I don't know. The details of how long it is and stuff like that, I don't know. But if possible, I'd want to substitute that one, because from my opinion and from a lot of the feedback that I've received from the community, that reads a lot, it's a lot worse in wear and tear. Plus, also, when I drove down Brenneman, there are some, it's a street, and there are some houses along that street, but there's big sections of it that are just kind of like empty fields. And then on South Palm Court, that's, that's one of the growing areas in my district. And then especially around the LE Circle and the Blumeria, that's like a subdivision that's being built, all these new homes, new families, and new houses being built. And I think we'd get more bang for our buck if we did that, because it's, it'd be providing better roads for a larger group of people.
Because we haven't started the design, the list is flexible today, so we'll take that under advisement.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Question.
Yes.
Does this paper supersede what's in our, our packet?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and so in the packet, it says twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, street improvement. Shouldn't it be twenty-two, twenty-three in the packet?
There, the twenty-one, twenty-two list you approved back last summer, August, I think.
Okay.
The list we're approving tonight is twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, got it.
Technology.
And how much has the price of asphalt gone up with the price of oil and petrols?
Well, we'll find out here in about late August. I would say quite a bit.
So I'm guessing fifty, eighty percent?
I would guess. The estimate that we have for the roads that we are finishing, that we are finishing the design of, is right about the money we have. And I don't want to disclose that, because that always becomes the bid price.
Right.
But it's about the same.
So when reality meets theory, reality, we may pave less footage of roads.
That's right. That's right. And if you think of this as one list, where you can just draw a line at, at the roads we can afford and then pick up from there.
Right.
Conversely, if you get a good price, maybe we can do more roads this year, fewer roads next year. That's why we, that's why we're always designing a set and always paving a set each year.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it's logistics and materials, right? That I think at some point, just like in other businesses, you have, just to get the material, it'd be tough. If we, if this commission hadn't bought vehicles, you know, over the last couple of years, and we bought a, quite a few of them, I mean, you can't buy a vehicle right now. So I'm very happy that we bought vehicles, at the time we did.
Yes.
So it may be the same thing, like you said, let's find out how much we can do right now, with what, with what we have, because the following year is only going to get tougher and tougher to get, just the materials, right?
And to the gentleman's point earlier, we're doing TAFT from the highway, the freeway, to Third Street, which is right at the school.
Right.
Next year, we'll do from that point to Commerce, which is the rest of TAFT.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number eight. Consideration and possible action to adopt a resolution abandoning a dedicated right-of-way easement legally described as a zero-point-seven-nine-four acre of land out of a portion of Block Twelve and Thirteen, Stewart Place Subdivision Survey One Thirty-Nine, Cameron County, Texas, located on the north side of Expressway Eighty-three, east of Tam Road.
Mayor, City Commissioners, good evening. We have a proposed commercial development along the north side of the expressway between Altus-Palmas Road and Tam Lane. It's a, it's a new project. The property was recently purchased by Mr. Baker from Bearagden for some major commercial developments. There is a right-of-way easement that runs east and west that was dedicated a hundred and one years ago, that needs to be abandoned to facilitate the commercial development. When the expressway was built back in the sixties, that made that right-of-way easement obsolete. So staff recommends approval.
So the right-of-way is empty?
Yeah, there's nothing, let me show you a picture. That's the aerial photograph of the property, that's the location of the right-of-way easement. And that's the photo, the easement runs like this. There's nothing there.
I meant underground.
No, there's nothing, yeah.
Any discussion? You have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine. Consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary ranking of the insurance consulting firms for professional consultant services of insurance for employee benefits.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. We went out for our, our queues for professional consultant services for, I'm sorry, that's the next item, for employee service benefits. We had six respondents. Each respondent was individually evaluated, and the highest ranking firm is Hub International in first place and McGriff in second place. We are asking for the commission's assistance in selecting the firm and authorize a city manager to negotiate a contract with the recommended firm.
What is Hub?
Hub is, I don't know the.
Are those initials of a firm?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
Are they located here, or they're regional, or?
Yes, the Hub is actually located in Texas. Their main office is located in El Paso.
And they have offices down here?
Not that I noted here on the list.
Commissioner, the company would actually assist us in getting major medical and some of the other, and generally policies that we provide. So once they do that, then they're pretty much done with their work.
I'm on their website now.
Did you have a question, Commissioner Mesmer?
It's all been answered.
Oh, okay, I was waiting on you, sorry. Is there any other discussion?
I have a question on, is this, is this, who did we use last year?
McGriff.
And is that who you're recommending?
McGriff came in and took him, please.
Okay, and why is that?
Just the scoring that was done.
Okay, can you explain the scoring?
Sure.
Because what I want to know is, was it objective, was it subjective, was it performance-driven, or was it somebody's opinion? And who was made up of the panel that ranked?
The panel was made up.
Do you have that in my packet? Is that in my packet?
Yes, everything is in the packet. The, the actual panel was made out of, made up of Joshua Minares, Robert Rodriguez, Efrain Fernandez, and myself, Oscar Salinas.
Okay. And tell me where the company, we've been, and how long have we been using the previous company?
I believe it's been several years. McGriff has, we've had a good response from them.
It's been about six years. Now, there were some years that we didn't go out for bids.
And they performed poorly, and I just want to know how they got outranked, and how the company you're recommending outperforms them. And, you know, how did Valley Risk score so low? What was the problem with them? What was the problem with the one that scored even lower than that, or the Barrett at eighty-two?
Yeah.
Again, were they performance-driven measures?
The rankings were. The rankings were...
Commissioner, they were just...
I know, I want him to tell me how he came up with that.
Yes, the rankings were divided into like, the overall understanding of the scope of the project.
Okay, so, again, please, if you can please, please tell me how, okay, let's, first, answer the first question of, between who we used last year and who you're recommending now, how is that one better?
Okay.
How did they outperform the ranking?
It was just based on the ranking, and that's what we are here for, for your input and assistance in making the decision.
No, I understand that, but how did you come up with them outscoring the previous person?
If we look at the tabulation, there is a...
Yeah, there's a score sheet. How did you come up with the score?
The score sheet was provided through purchasing.
Do you have a breakdown of that, how they came up with that number?
It should be in your packet.
I have, I have the numbers.
Yes, but the actual score sheet should be there, too.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
It seems to me you either trust these four employees to do their job, or you'd better fire them. I mean, you, we put them to work and they came up with something, so let them work.
Mike, I want to know how they came up with it, it's a fair question. Was it performance-driven? Did they not do their job? Were they late to, did they couldn't, could they not perform, were they, are they not bonded?
We're buying sausage, we're not asking how it was made.
Let's just stay, let's stay on point. It looks like, based on the, on the rating, it was 97.5, right, previous?
Yes.
For McGriff, and Hub is 98.25. It doesn't seem like a substantial change.
It's not a substantial, some of the, depending on how and who scored what, it might just be how they perceived the, let's say, their knowledge or understanding of the scope of the project.
Okay, so that's to my point. If somebody's, again, and they haven't been doing business with us for 20 years, but they've been doing our evaluation the last four or five years, and they've done a good job, unless they were really screwed up, I mean, for one, somebody to be subject to, you know, I don't like the way they filled out that application, I'm going to ding them on that, which is what happens. And that's, that, the procurement process, the way we go on contracts, I've always said has to be more fair, more transparent, more exact, and not subjective, right? Because I'm assuming every one of these companies are very reputable, and it's, again, it's all perception. You know, it's like our permitting process, you know, you can read the ordinance or the specs on what needs to be done, but if the inspector says it's different, then it's different. And that's why I'm telling you that with this panel, you know, how did we, how did that person who's been doing work with us, did they just not, they just did a poor job?
No, it's not, it wasn't based on their performance either. So it was based on the criteria that was developed and by purchasing as far as, you know, the general understanding of the scope, the number of references, municipal references, and things of that nature. And that's how maybe they got dinged a little bit more than the others. Have they done the job? Have they done a good job? Yes, they have. And that's why we are here, to ask for your guidance.
Do they have an office here?
No, they're in the Dallas Metroplex area.
Yeah, so that's another problem.
Are there any that are local?
The local representatives here, yes. We have some local representation. Most of them are going to be from the San Antonio area also, but they have local, they have local representation.
Local companies that submitted?
Local Valley Risk out of McAllen.
Mm-hmm.
And that's it. The others are from the San Antonio, El Paso, Austin area.
And again, Mike...
Excuse me, excuse me. Point of order, this is Frank. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Mr. Salinas?
Yes, sir.
Oh, he's got the look.
All right, here's what, here's my information, which, I got this yesterday when I picked up the packet. Barrett is out of McAllen. Gallagher is out of Austin. McGriff, which is Scott Gibbs, is out of Addison, which is the side of Dallas. McGriff, Gibbs, they have, they have been the consultant for Harlingen for the past 14 out of the past 15 years. You gave them 100, just like Mr. Fernandez, who's on his way out, okay? And I questioned Mr. Fernandez a year ago, okay? And he couldn't answer. One of the programs I tried to do for the city of Harlingen, that has fallen on deaf ears and I'm restarting again, is trying to get a wellness program, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Serna brought it up, and he told me specifically, he was going to talk to the insurance consultant to see what, how we can implement it. When I pressed him, he came back to me, asking me to, to tell him how this wellness program would help the city of Harlingen. Mr. Fernandez, on the other hand, was going to go out for bids to save us money. The wellness program that I had in place, well, not that I had in place, the one that I'm asking for you guys, and I'm referring to staff, to look and check out the numbers and make sure it's doable. By my estimates, it would have saved the city of Harlingen $360,000, $600 per employee, okay? Mr. Fernandez, who's on his way out, wanted to have bids...
That's twice he's on his way out.
...to save us more money. You can ask him, but I don't think anything was ever done. So I'm sorry to tell you or correct you here, but Barrett is out of McAllen, and so is this Valley Risk, is out of McAllen. Everybody else, the closest, would be Gallagher out of Austin. And one of the things I need to remind my fellow commissioners, that was brought up to our attention not long ago by Mayor Boswell and Dan Serna, the city manager prior, and I quote, "You voted for it. Zero consideration was given to us, was given to the fact that staff led us in one direction, and we had a choice between one, two, and three. And whether we chose one, two, or three, it was already set up." In this particular case, which is something I've been harping on since August, I would disregard the top three that everybody's leading us toward and go with either Valley, Valley Risk out of McAllen, who had the contract for a very short period of time, or Barrett, which is, both of these groups are out of McAllen. That's my opinion, sir. I appreciate you taking the hits for Mr. Efren Fernandez, who's on his way out. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, he's going to be working in Brownsville in the very short near future.
Okay, so...
Yes, and that is great. Barrett does have local representation out of McAllen.
So, so again, so what bothers me, sticks out, is that, you know, both of those companies got, scored perfect scores on it, right? They got hundreds, and then the other ones are way below it, 65, 55, and I really would like to see what that is. So I'd like to make a motion with table, and I'd like to get some more answers, and we can look at that at the next meeting.
Second.
But before we vote, Frank Morales, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I am on point. You said that it cost the city over $300,000. Where did you get your data?
It would save the city $360,000.
Okay, where did you get your data for 360,000?
Hold up. The whole premise of this wellness program is to save $600 per employee. That's where I get 360,000.
And how do you get 600?
If we have 600 employees that sign up on the average of $600. I have presented that to the Assistant Finance Director. I've yet to be able to set up a meeting for Mr. Gonzalez, so he can be on a Zoom and he can partake on that presentation. We've had elections, we've had little odds and ends that have come up, now we're back to square one, which means, sir, you yourself can be part of that Zoom, so you can observe it and ask the questions. And if there's another program, another wellness program that can save us money, please, let's use it. Why? Because I believe, and I might be wrong, if we have a wellness program, these insurance companies that we're looking at, or this insurance consultant will bring up, they will see that we're proactive in trying to reduce our risk. Meaning what? Hopefully, we will have a reduction in how much we pay into our insurance. By the same token, the city saves money, and the employee themselves walks away with $50 to $75 more in their pocket. But the decision will be made later, because I need Mr. Gonzalez, maybe yourself, maybe the new HR person, to look at, to sit for this bill, crunch out the numbers, and present it to us, to make sure that what I'm saying is correct. Or if there's something better, let's open our minds and stop getting out of this box there. We have to keep things the same way. That's all I'm asking for, Commissioner Missmore.
Okay, Mayor, so Mayor, we have a first and a second, but I do, before we vote, I want to make sure if we can, if I can get, sometime next week, to look at that, as far as the rankings and how they, we can sit down and talk about it.
We do need to make the decision at the next meeting, because we're getting short on time.
That's fine. I get it, but it's just, you know, how does somebody score 100, and then somebody else on the panel gives them a 55?
What we can also do is just remain some of the consultants that you'd like to see. At the next meeting, have them present to the commission.
Okay. Gabe, I had a quick question, and you partially answered it. So when is the deadline that we have, because we're always tabling, so by next meeting, we have to get it done?
By next meeting, yeah, we definitely have somebody on board.
We can call a special meeting.
Well, we have to have the insurance on board for the budget discussions, and we're working on budget now, so we might have to reduce our timeline that we normally have to solicit votes for health insurance by two weeks, because that's, we're going to lose between now and next meeting.
So would it be a good idea to do like, maybe a special meeting, like Richard suggested, so we won't lose so much time?
We can.
We should have a renewal proposal from our current medical provider sometime between this week and next week. And then, at that point, it would have been nice for the consultant to start working on it. But we can look at it and say, you know what, it's going to look like we might have to go out for proposals, or not, at that point, and we'll have more information once we have that information.
I think the rate we got from United is higher than what we were expecting of them.
Yes, definitely. But it was just a preliminary number.
Right.
Called to vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item number 10, consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary ranking of the insurance consulting firms for professional consultant services of insurance for windstorm.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We went out for our queues for professional consultant services for windstorm insurance, and we had two respondents. Each respondent was individually evaluated, and the highest ranking firm is Carlisle Insurance in first place, and the Cleveland Agency in second. We are asking for the commission's assistance in selecting the firm and to authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with the recommended firm.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to select Carlisle.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 11, consideration and possible action to authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city of Harlingen, to enter into a law enforcement mutual aid or assistance inter-local agreement between Cameron County Sheriff, Cameron County Precinct 1 through 5, constables, and the Cameron County Park Rangers.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is an MOU, really with the county, and primarily the sheriff's department through customs and border protection. It involves Operation Stone Garden, which we already sub-grante of, and we provide officers work in Operation Stone Garden, region which typically runs outside the city limits a little bit. The reason for this extended MOU is they're looking at the end of Title 42, and CVP feels that when that ends, they're going to have a large influx of immigrants across the border, they're going to pull most of their agents back for processing, and they're requesting this type of assistance so that we may further work the county area, including up into Brownsville and all the way to the Cameron County border, west side. Just makes it official with all the other agencies that are listed here for Operation Stone Garden, that we would have that jurisdiction. I have reviewed it with the city legal, and we're recommending approval.
Any discussion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That concludes our meeting. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being with us tonight.